We need Danielle needs 10 seconds or so to start the recording. I think we're ready to go. Should have been a long event there. Sure, there are you still on?
Yes, go ahead and start.
Are we okay? Okay, great.
Okay, so somebody's gonna scroll down here so we get to the, okay, there we go. Okay, call the meeting to order.
Bernie's handling that, so.
Okay, uh, call the meeting to order and make reference to Metro ordinance 2.68.030, saying that any action of this board can be appealed, changed records, Davidson County. Uh, now then, we move to, I have this next thing on page one, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. Uh, let's see, what I ask for a motion to approve conducted meetings by electronic means.
That was so.
So moved.
Second.
But we probably need to identify ourselves.
Robert K. Orman, so moved.
Joyce Cersei, second.
And the, and the motion is, do I need to read the motion? Maybe I do. Uh, move that the items on the meeting agenda constitute essential business of this board meeting electronically is necessary to protect the health, safety and welfare of Tennesseans, considering the COVID-19 outbreak and any rule that conflicts with the Governor's Executive Order 16. For meeting electronic meetings be suspended. Now, Robert, make your motion.
Robert K. Orman, move to conduct the meeting by electronic means.
Joyce?
Cersei, second the motion.
Okay. Uh, all in, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Adriana Vialostos.
All right, okay. All right, move on. So, next up is any public comments. I see nobody on with a public comment. Um, I'll, I'll defer my comments until later in the meeting. Uh, the minutes, uh, here a motion, we approve the minutes.
I approve the minutes.
I second that, Adriana Vialostos.
Okay, we have a motion and second, any, uh, any discussion or corrections or additions to the minutes? If not, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Uh, motion passed. Okay, we now come to, uh, report.
Okay, well, thank you all for being on here. I appreciate it. Uh, I know this is a little bit more of a challenge, but at least we're able to have an official meeting. Um, so, a, a few things to hit really quickly. Hopefully you all had a chance to at least glance at my written update that I sent out yesterday. Um, I, I guess the thing I, I hope you guys understand is that we are really busy and, and getting a lot done in the background. And I think all of you by now probably had a chance to go online and, and look at the, uh, the website and everything we're providing there. But, uh, there's really quite a bit going on in the background. Um, in addition to that, we've had about, I'm sure by now over 200,000 items checked out, uh, ebooks and those sorts of things, um, from the, the online presence. The amount of programming that's going on is just phenomenal. It is growing literally by the day, uh, including, um, the story hours and, and other programming that's being provided. So I didn't know if you had any questions about that or not. We did decide to brand that, uh, NPL Universe, and, uh, it's very exciting. It's really exciting.
Kent, I had someone in my neighborhood posted to our, uh, link, you know, with all of the neighbors.
Great.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the more that you can help get that information out, the better. I think we're kind of getting, getting everywhere and we've hit a lot of the media outlets already. So, uh, but I feel really great about what's happening in that space. And of course, as we've talked about, it's going to be interesting to see how much of this, um, remains as our society reopens. I just is kind of a new normal in the way we deliver program.
I, I have a question. I'm so sure it's the moment to do it. How are you, uh, working with elder population and their access to, um, to the internet, well, to, to electronics? Because I, we find that they are having a harder time.
Right, right.
The Latinos or the, um, diverse population.
Well, in regard to the, the elderly population, Marion, uh, who does our, um, digital inclusion has been reaching out directly to a lot of that population and also a lot of the agencies herself. So that is going on. And we're actually thinking about, uh, for instance, the Hispanic population. We're, we're in the early stages of developing this, but we're trying to develop a Storytime program that the new MLS players have offered to deliver, uh, in Spanish. So those are just some of the things that we're trying to get done.
Okay, and I, let me just offer you that, uh, the, the, the way a lot of Latinos, because we're trying to do telehealth with them, is, uh, they use a lot of WhatsApp as their WhatsApp, as their way, uh, because not a lot of them have, uh, phone, they have Samsung, so FaceTime and that is hard. They, some of them don't have emails at all.
Okay.
So, so that you know. And my other thing, and I know I like, might not be, but it's, um, anything, like, is there anything in the library that could help them with understanding what a telehealth visit means for adults and for young would be a fabulous thing for the, because that's where we are all going.
Okay, well, we are looking at all, all aspects of this, and I'm sure, I know that Andrea is working on different pieces of this, and she's kind of pulling all of our NPL Universe together. We have our production people are working on this. Um, Megan Godby, I'm sure is engaged from our immigrant services, so, but I will give them a heads up on, on your comments and make sure that, that they're looking at that. But, um, goal of course is to get it as widespread as possible. That's part of our, our user base.
Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. I appreciate the suggestion. We can use them all, believe me. In the first couple of weeks of this, we were getting a lot of great suggestions and, and points, uh, to, within the community, all parts of the community, and it's been really helpful. People have been good about reaching out.
Um. This is Katie. May I ask a question about the tracking of, um, the Universe program?
Yeah, yeah. What do you, what do you mean by tracking?
Well, just, um, how, how many people are using it? Are we gonna be reporting on it?
We are, we are going, yes, we are going to be reporting on it, and Bernie has been working, uh, with Andrea and our online people, because the social hits and, and that type of thing and understanding how we count that. For instance, with the Brian's early, um, Storytime, we know that we had 400 people that we were able to count through Facebook and as people, different people accessing the, uh, the programs, and we're going to be refining those counts as we go forward.
Right, thanks.
Okay, you're welcome. Um. Oh, one thing I should mention too is that early on in this, we had staff that volunteered to work at a new, uh, homeless shelter down at the fairgrounds, and we also have had staff that are volunteering to, uh, assist the Health Department in tracking, uh, COVID cases. And, uh, that just came about through the mayor's office in the last few days. Those staff members will be trained at the Health Department and then working from home on their computers, um, as they try and trace, uh, where, uh, infections have occurred with the COVID. But that was kind of exciting. Um, in talking about reopening the library, um, I have not heard anything specific from Metro about when they're going to lift their safe at home, although we know the state is, it's going to be lifting theirs in the next few days, or is lifted beginning the next few days. Uh, but I'm assuming we will be wanting to take the lead of, of what Metro is doing. And of course, I'm, I've been very impressed with what Metro is doing through our Health Department as they're looking at the health experts and trying to understand what is actually happening here in Nashville. Behind the scenes, we've been working on phase, uh, phase in plan as far as providing library services, um, with an early phase, a mid-phase, and then eventually fully up and running. And that early phase would have to do with doing more curbside service, having, assisting people with pickups and holds and limiting the number of people in buildings. The, um, the real roadblock we're running into is that, as you hear on the national news, is that we are desperately trying to track down personal protective equipment and devices. The, uh, the main things that we're going to be needing are going to be masks and gloves and disinfectant wipes for materials. We are, we are right on top of that, and I've reached out to Metro and I've not heard back to see if they have another source for some of those things. Uh, but we are, our supply people are looking everywhere trying to obtain them. Any questions about that? Okay.
I guess I've got a quick question. So I'm assuming you, you will not open unless you are confident you have X number of months worth of PPE for your staff?
Well.
Do you have a goal on that?
We don't, we need to, right now, we only have a few weeks of normal operation in the back as far as disinfectant wipes. We're trying to obtain the others. But I would be working with you guys as we build up that supply to understand what we can and can't do. Um, we would need a limited amount of, of material, of protective equipment, if we were doing curbside service or just allowing people to walk in and pick up their holds and leave. It becomes more complicated the more buildings we open, uh, the more materials we have to clean off, the more pieces of the building we have to keep disinfected and that sort of thing. So I will keep you guys informed about where we are with that. Um, but I think that's going to be a, a really critical part of this.
Kent, this is Keith. I mean, where do you find that? I mean, do you go through Metro procurement or something, or?
Yeah, yeah, we, yeah, we're working, uh, we work through our usual, usual supply, uh, methods as we order through Metro, and we've even branched out beyond that, just trying to find anything.
You don't normally, you're not having masks and gloves. Uh, I mean, you're not buying those things normally, so.
Right. We're, we're in the same boat as everybody else, um, just in trying to track these things down, and we've, we've even, we're even hearing stories through Metro where they've tried to obtain items, that they had them and somebody came in, in with a better price and ended up with the, uh, materials that they thought they were going to receive. So the, the stories you see on, on the news are absolutely true, and I'm sure Adriana can speak in, in the medical department, but, uh, it is, uh, going to be a challenge for us.
Yeah, absolutely. I agree. It is a huge challenge. And, uh, I mean, hospitals have worked very hard to keep, uh, and as you must be aware, Vanderbilt had the tornado tore apart of their, um, one of their, um, storage places, so we were behind. I, I think there's a whole committee that I'm trying to get and assure that at least the decisions that are working with COVID, like kids, we are protected, but it is, it is a problem.
But we're not doing this in isolation. And like I said, I've reached out to the mayor's office, and we're going to continue turning over every rock we can. My concern is I don't want us to be in a position where, uh, at least as far as the safe at home orders, it would be okay for us to be doing limited curbside service or something else, and we just nothing, uh, no way to open because we, we cannot disinfect or protect our staff. Um, now two budget items I wanted to get into, uh, quickly. First was kind of our status with the Metro budget, then to talk about the foundation budget a little bit. Um, we're waiting for the mayor's budget to come out. They, he had to stop in their tracks, I believe, and, and totally redo it. If you watch State of Metro, you know that we are in a $250 to $300 million budget hole. Um, so we are anticipating extensive reductions. And, um, for us, you know, that means that our, our primary line item is personnel. And, uh, as we've talked about many times before, if we did not have staff in place to provide service, especially the public service side, then we cannot open our buildings. Uh, we are in a hard freeze on hiring right now. Um, and what that means is we currently have 43 open positions. So even if our buildings were open, we would probably be looking at having a building or two closed. Um, just because we would not have enough staff to, um, to serve, provide service in those. Um. That is, again, personnel is our primary area where we can get the reductions. So we are just kind of sitting and waiting, sitting and waiting to see, uh, what our proposed budget from the mayor looks like, and then we'll be reacting from there. Recently, the Civil Service Board, uh, provided, uh, regulations for furloughs, which could be an option, uh, Metro departments, including us. And I think most of you know what furloughs are, but that would be an option where we could. Place staff on furloughs so that they could receive, um, we would not, they would not lose benefits and they could receive them, but they would only be out a week at a time, to the extent of a total of four weeks possible in a budget here. So that would be an option for us to save money, and then the other option would be straight layoffs. Um, which, um, is not something that any of us want to consider, but it may be the main way we get there. Just a reminder that we've already had two years of, of pretty significant budget cuts of the, in the $800,000 range. They call those budget savings, but in essence, we had the staff position remaining open, and we were cutting, um, expenses within the operating budget wherever we could. Um, we don't have a lot of extra, um, money to move around in capital. Uh, we have some emergency, um, repairs that are being conducted, and our 4% budget is good right now. To some extent, we've been pretty assertive about buying ebooks and other, providing other e-formats, but we are trying to back off those purchases now because we don't know how long our remaining balance of the 4% will need to last. We have about one and a half million dollars remaining that I believe, maybe, we're guessing that may have to last anywhere from six months to a year. And we know the ebooks that we've been purchasing are the ones that are very expensive, and they're ranging, the lease of those is ranging mostly in the area of $30 to $40 per title, uh, for limited use. Any questions about the Metro budget?
Kent, this is Keith. Um, you've got, um, I think you told us or me, I can't remember which, that, um, the, some of the tornado damage would be covered by FEMA money.
Right.
But in the meantime, you've got to sort of front end that, uh.
Right, what, yeah, the, the primary, there were two, uh, there were two primary tornado-related damages, uh, we're dealing with. Uh, the North Branch, uh, which was FEMA, um, we've, we've submitted our request for that, and, uh, it was mainly, in addition to the windows, it was mainly the roof, the tile roof, but the tile roof that's on that is actually more cosmetic than anything else. So the building is not leaking right now, and we've replaced the windows. So in theory, we could reopen that building if we needed to.
This is Robert. It looked to me like the door was damaged as well. The front doors look, is that not right?
Right, and we, yeah, and we repaired that as well. The, the other, uh, issue we were dealing with, the East Branch, although it occurred at the same time as the tornado, uh, was the, the, uh, the sewer line, and that has been repaired, and there was some utility damage that we believe caused some of that. And we are using, uh, operating money to deal with that right now, but we also have a submission into the, I believe it was the CARES, uh, package, um, that has a specific section about, uh, stormwater in sewers. So we've made a submission, uh, in regard to that. And then the other piece that we've moved forward on and should be getting, was being worked on yesterday, is the air handler at the main library. And the air handler there, uh, was at end of life anyway, and the tornado appears to have shorted something out, uh, but they are rebuilding that as, as we sit here, um, and, uh, I believe that cost is going to be about $60,000. And if I recall correctly, and I may not be correct on this, I believe Susan was submitting that to FEMA as well because we thought it was storm-related, um, due to electrical, uh, storms that were in the area with the tornado.
Kent, I read in your notes that, um, it, you obviously can't reopen the main without that air hammer being fixed. What's the timing on that?
I do not, do not have a specific date, but as I said, they're in there now. So I'm confident that if we said we were reopening, for instance, May 15th, that we'd be able to reopen.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay. Uh, moving right along to the foundation budget. Um. We've had an interesting, uh, foundation budget process this, this year, and I'm going to try and walk you through it, um, kind of from the beginning to end. And if you're not familiar with what we do with the, the foundation's budget each year, anyway, this will be a little bit of a, of an update for you. Um, and then I think we probably are gonna want to have some discussion at the end of this. I know Keith is interested in, in having some discussion. I'll turn it over to him when I'm through with this. Um, typically, when we're preparing the foundation budget, uh, we begin talking with the foundation in the late fall or around the first of the year. Uh, this year, we did not have those meetings, um, for whatever reason. Um, and we received, uh, a request from the, uh, the foundation to fill out their forms and get it in. And, and what happens is we have a very detailed budget form for each program that is funded through the foundation. Most of those, uh, tend to be in a leases area. Uh, the target budget we were given this year was 2, 2,068,000. And, um, that is the, uh, sustainability bottom line that they identified several, a couple of years ago, and, and the sustainability budget project the foundation has been going through. Uh, and to give you a little perspective on that, three years ago, our support from the foundation was 2.7 million. Um. Typically, what happens and happened this, this year is we go back and forth, we submit our request to the, which are always higher than the number they gave us. Uh, this year, I believe we, we were initially thinking we wanted about 2.3 million. Uh, we negotiated with Sean, um, uh, over a several week process after PLA and in the middle of the tornado and the virus here, and a bit quicker, we thought we had arrived at the 2,068,000 dollar number. Uh, last week, the, uh, Foundation Finance Committee approved, uh, with what they were calling a 10% reduction. And let me walk you through this before you, before, uh, you start wondering what's going on here. Uh, the total amount that they approved was, um, 2,011,000 dollars for programs and expenses. And that included $140,000, uh, of programming money for the votes for women money. Our understanding was that this money would be outside of the expenses being, uh, credited towards, uh, the library, because this, these were funds that had not previously been in the budget, and were a little bit extraordinary at the time. Um, when you back out the, uh, the $140,000 from this bottom line number of a 10% reduction, you get to 1,871,000 as a budget for what we consider to be the, uh, the main foundation-related programs. Um, the issue or the challenge we continue to have in addition to the reduced amount is that, um, the money is within this 1,871,000 will be restricted funds. And what we mean by that is that the grants, uh, that come in or the foundation support that comes to the foundation is directed at very specific, uh, programs within that budget. So you do not have much room to move money around. Um. So with this 10% reduction, that really kind of puts us in a hole. Um. I believe what's going to happen to us as we, as we go through the year, if the foundation is not able to raise the, the funds, um, to the, to the level that we had originally hoped, that we will undoubtedly end up, uh, cutting out any type of programming that is funded by unrestricted monies, and we may be, need to look at eliminating a, uh, an established program. It's worth noting that within this budget, uh, the foundation did allocate half a million, a little over half a million dollars of reserve funding. And it's hard to tell exactly, um, from looking at their balance sheets, what their total unrestricted funds are that are available, but they appear to be about 2.9 million dollars. Um. So that is kind of the situation that we find ourselves in, um, at this point. And I, I'd really, I'd personally rather not characterize the discussion that I, I heard at the Finance Committee. Um, but Keith has been in discussions with the, the foundation somewhat, so I'll turn it over to Keith at this point.
Um, well, first of all, Kent, um, uh, let me ask you about one thing you said, uh, because it was different than I understood it.
Okay.
That as far as how much they, uh, allocated from their rainy day fund, um, and looking at the numbers that you said yesterday, they had projected a 15% reduction in fundraising. So after they go through all their budgets and they, they forecast a contingency reduction of 15%, that's $525,000.
Right.
And then they, they forecast, then they budgeted a 10% reduction in, uh, support to the library. That's $223,000 and a 10% reduction in foundation operating expenses. And most of their expenses are people expenses.
Right.
That's $137,000. The difference. The difference between five twenty-five and the sum of those two expenditure numbers is a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. And that's what I understood from talking to David Esteban yesterday. They had allocated from their, uh, rainy day fund, not a hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, well, that is not the way this spreadsheet reads. I, I agree with you. I mean, your numbers are correct and there's certainly that gap in there, but I, I haven't received no communication on that one where it is.
Well, um, just so people understand, um, um, that they do have, uh, let me find my spreadsheet. They do have, uh, some money in reserve, the foundation does. Um, and my numbers are February 29th numbers, so they're, they're higher than, their balance sheet numbers are, are less now than they were on February 29th, obviously because of what's, what's happened in the markets. But there is a, as of February 29th, there was a 3.1 million dollar, what I would call rainy day fund, unrestricted money that could be applied in a rainy day. And then they've got some other funds, um, and then the endowment, which they really can't spend, um, there's about 7.3 million dollars there. And then every year, they, they, uh, that, it's been a longstanding practice that they distribute five, 5% of the, uh, endowment every year. So the theory being some years you'll be under 5% in, uh, in return on investment and some days you'll be over 5%. But of course, we've had a bull market for a number of years now, and so there's some accumulated money there, about eight hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. So there is some accumulated money. They're trying to figure out how deeply to go into those, uh, rainy day funds. And, um, you know, I, I, I don't, that's, that's an inexact science, I think. But anyway, my understanding is that they dipped into the true rainy day fund, the three million dollars to the tune of a hundred and sixty-five thousand. So Kent's got a different number, so I guess we just need to figure that out. And, um, but, um, he's right, as I understand it now. So there's two ways you can look at this. You can look at it as we now have a budget of a million, eight seventy-one this year for next year. Or you can look at it as we have a budget of a million, eight seventy-one plus two twenty-three, and the two twenty-three is sort of this contingency number that, that may be a hit and it may not be a hit depending upon fundraising, what fundraising looks like, um, over next, the next fiscal year. But, um, I think what it means to us is, what it means to us is, we've now got to start thinking about where do you find 223,000 dollars in these programs that the, uh, foundation is funding? And, and then it gets, I mean, you know, I mean, we can't get down in the weeds of the board and sort of figure out, you know, where you take that money from and when you take that money from and how you, how you stage it. And, you know, there are a lot of ways to work with a budget. But I think what it amounts to is you got to find, you got, you got to figure out where to cut. And as Kent says, there's been a fair amount of cutting over the last, uh, two or three years. So I think it's going to be, it could be painful. I'm talking to David yesterday. Uh, first of all, this is the finance, so the board is not moving. There's the board. The way I, I, I appreciate what they're trying to do.
Keith, I'm sorry, you're going in and out a little bit. Can you start back at the beginning of that last paragraph? I talked to David the other day.
Uh, I talked to David, I don't know which paragraph you're talking about. So th- this has been approved by the Finance Committee. It has not been approved by the board. The board will need to, may sometime, I don't know when, and, and approve this. Um, and we have three members of the board sitting here today, so, um, we can have a voice at that, at that board meeting. To me, it's sort of, you know, it, it's easy to say, okay, we're going to have a 10% reduction and that amounts to 223,000 dollars. And, and so we've got to have that in order to balance the budget. But, and, and, and we need to preserve a three million dollar rainy day fund or whatever it is. But it gets harder when you say, we'd rather have the money than to have, just make an example out of the air, bringing books to life. We'd rather have the money than to have, you know, the adult literacy program. We'd rather have the money than to have whatever. And I think what has to happen, it seems to me, fairly soon, and I know nobody has time to do this on staff, we gotta, we gotta put a face on what the reductions really mean. And, and I have, uh, you know, I've been sort of found myself embroiled in this in the last couple of weeks and, um, and have gone through all kinds of, uh, of emotions about it, uh, anger, resentment, uh, uh, just generally pissed off about the whole thing. But the fact of the matter is, uh, an internecine war with the foundation, uh, benefits nobody. And so we just got to sit through and work through this. I don't know whether there is flexibility, um, you know, that depends on sort of the personalities of the people involved. But in talking to David, I think that if we really look at this thing program by program and figure out where the cuts have to be, um, you know, I mean, theoretically, they could fund the whole shortfall out of their rainy day fund. Now, I understand they don't want to exhaust their rainy day fund, but, um, I, I just think there's more discussion to be had here. And after going through a lot of sort of un, un, un-nice thoughts, uh, I have come around the idea that we just need, it's just, I mean, we're facing a difficult time, uh, and, uh, the economy is going to be a mess for the foreseeable future and we're just going to have to work through this as best we can and preserve those things that really are, are vital and key and, 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 and are really, you know, the emblematic things that the library has done over the years. So, uh, I think it's going to take some work and, and, uh, you know, as usual, it falls on the shoulders of the staff to figure out which ones are, are there and which ones aren't. But I do think we need to be more engaged than normal in the process to really understand what we're doing because some of this, some of this stuff can have pretty significant, not pretty significant, really significant effects on, um, our library. So anyway, that's my speech. Anybody have any questions?
Yeah, I do. This is Katie. One, that was a good speech and thank you for walking us through it. I appreciate it and really appreciate the time you've put into this to figure out what's going on and to, it, it is critical that the library and the foundation, you know, walk shoulder to shoulder and everything you're doing to make sure that happens, I really appreciate it and I'm sure everybody else does as well. My, my question is, um, prior to, to, to be prepared for the many board meeting, we really do, I, I think you're exactly right about having specifics, putting a face on what the programs are because I've been in those finance committee meetings and I understand that generally it's, it's all about numbers on a page, um, and what, you know, people on the foundation and all the, uh, intention think is the responsible thing to do. I think if we're going to go in the next meeting and have questions about before we vote, we need to say, if and if we go through with this cut, this is what the library, um, will have to cut. And I don't, I don't know whether that, whether we're at that level yet or not. Um, I guess my, I have a question and that is, where are we at process?
I'm, Kent will have to address that, but you know, it's made even more difficult by the fact that they're trying to figure out how to reopen and, and all the stuff that Kent talked about. And they've just been through a process that's really kind of carrying the budget down all day. I just think, I, I don't, I don't know that there's any way around it. But I defer to Kent.
Can I, before you answer that, can, can I just add one quick thing? I guess my big overall question is, if this isn't a rainy day, then what is? Then what's the point of having a rainy day fund if we don't use it during a major typhoon?
And I'm, and I'm wondering too, this is Joyce, I'm wondering too, as well as putting, saying exactly what we, we cut, I'm wondering if we figure out, not just this program would be cut and that costs so much, but to put, how, how is that going to have an impact on the city? And how's it going to impact the city coming back too?
Well, this is Kent, and, and we can certainly do that. I mean, because we have, we have the dollar numbers and the budget numbers, but I, I guess there are a couple of things that, that we were already doing. The Programming Committee of the Foundation Board, each, each time they meet provides, we provide, uh, a pro, we provide a program about a program. We do a presentation regarding a program. So, I mean, recently we did Bringing Books to Life. Uh, we've done digital inclusion. We have, you know, the list goes on. We have basically been providing them specific information about what these programs are doing. And when we instigated that with the Programming Committee, the idea was that, um, it would help, help the, uh, foundation members, board members be, uh, better salespeople in promoting those programs. So I, I, I think we're already doing that in some ways and we can certainly, I mean, Elise and I know, know this budget. We always know this budget by this time of year and we can put a dollar amount on, on which program that goes, but I, I can honestly tell you that after you cut out the, uh, non-designated funds or the unrestricted money that comes in, and those primarily support programs like, uh, the courtyard concert, which won't be happening this year probably, um, but the money that goes into the branches, the money that comes into Maine to do children's programs and those sorts of things, because we have no Metro money for that, that's going to be a little bit of the money we need, but we will still be well short of that. So at that point, we will be needing to look at something like, how much of the studio can we trim down? And for instance, the studio is partially funded by Metro and partially funded by the foundation. And if you, if you haven't heard this discussion before, part of the complexity of this is which, which of the programs are funded through restricted monies, which are unrestricted or which are partially funded by Metro, uh, and the foundation, which are solely foundation. And unfortunately, this year, we've received no breakdown on what is being funded for restricted, uh, by restricted funds whatsoever. And typically, we receive that each year and even their Finance Committee requested that. But it's really hard to make that determination, um, until we have that, that kind of, uh, detail within the funding of these, so.
Kent, this is Robert. Are we empowered in any way to go after outside grants?
We, we, yeah, we do all the time. And for instance, the piece of NASA that is funded, um, outside of Metro is really funded by an Institute of Museum and Library Services grant. I believe it's about 335,000 dollars. And really, the foundation rents that money to our foundation budget.
I ask that, I ask that because the studio budget seems to be the kind of thing we could get the Grammy Foundation to fund.
Right. And, and we have in the past, like when it, it began, it began underneath the grant.
Right.
And one of the reasons I mentioned NASA specifically is that, again, that's a good example of a restricted fund program that is within, uh, that program budget that we are going to be asked to reduce. And that is also a program where our, our staff working with the foundation staff at some level have really gone out and been able to obtain that funding.
I, I, I have a question and I think I'm going to go back to what Lucy says. I, I don't think there's, this is a pandemic. It's not going to, um, to happen hopefully that often. So I think, why are we not having a discussion again and why, why, when are they wanting to use that rainy day fund? I don't think we've ever had something as big and as impactful. So I am really wanting to go back to the conversation is, what are their criteria for not using this money for this time when it's just out of, like, this is so unprecedented?
And the last, this is Joyce, and the last time I think we saw all this difficulty in the economy was 2008 or so, right?
All right. And I was going to jump in there, Keith, you can too. I remember Keith and I were both on the foundation board and we had an emergency meeting because we just lost, I don't remember how many hundreds of thousands out of our fund just by stock market drops, which of course, you know, affected how much we gave the library that
Well, I think in a, on a, on a more global sense, um, I, I really think there's, that there's, there's, it has gotten to be, um, somewhat of a misalignment of power, um, between library, the library board, foundation, the foundation finance committee, and maybe even the, the library, the foundation board. I was involved in a visioning session and Kent was too, uh, and Elise was as well, uh, last week, where they're doing, um, basically trying to do a strategic plan. And, um, and I, and in one way, I was gratified by the fact that a lot of people said, um, you know, one of the main things we need to do is, um, look at the relationship between the, uh, foundation and the library and the library board. And I, and so I think there is a movement afoot to, um, it just needs to be kind of a relook as, as time has gone along over the last 20 years, 25 years, whatever it is. You know, you've, you've got a totally different cast of players, both on the foundation board. You don't even have continuity, uh, at the library director chair and the foundation, uh, board chair or the, the foundation CEO. You know, there, there's, and, and, and I'm not being critical of anybody, there's just been, I think, sort of a little bit of a drift. And, and I, I, I'm hoping that in terms of both overall relationship and process, that we can, um, repair that. And, and, and I think, I think part of that is a recognition that, um, I, I, I do recognize that they're trying to be fiscally responsible. And you've got people on the Finance Committee that are, as it should be, that are numbers people. You know, they're bankers and, and, uh, and accountants and finance people. And that's what they deal with every day. And also I recognize that there's much more corporate giving now than there, than there was back when Katie and I were on the foundation board. And that necessarily results in more process and in more, you, I think, I think they got to show. Um, and that necessarily results in more process and in more, you, I think, I think they got to show themselves to the donor that they are being physically responsible. So I think there are a lot of things at, at play here that, uh, that I'm sort of trying to take into account as I, as I sort of figure this thing out. Um, I, to me, the, the, the thing that the foundation has to do is sort of, they use an old rotary club expression, feed the need. I mean, there's tremendous need in the community and more than ever now because of all this. And, and, uh, and, and so the need is really outrun, outrunning the, the fundraising. And, and, and you know, when, when we were on the foundation board, Katie, um, you know, I think the first priority was to figure out what the need was and to figure out what the opportunities were. And then we'd figure out how to go fund it, and I think it's sort of a little bit reversed now.
The mission statement of the foundation is to support the library and I think there, there seems to, to Lucy's point, we are in a rainy day and their job as a foundation is to support us in our time of need, which is now.
You're right.
Yeah, and I, I want to just add one quick thing and I, maybe this isn't the right thing to say, but I'm just feeling a need to say it. There is a subtle sense of, um, disconnect or antagon, there's sort of a little bit of an antagonistic feeling between the finance committee and the fact that, you know, the library wants, wants enough money to, to fund the programs. Um, and it, it, it feels funny to me, I don't, I don't like it, it doesn't feel, um, partner-like, it, it, it's awkward. And I, I feel like that needs to be addressed.
I totally agree with that Lucy, this is Katie.
And, and this is Joyce, I also think there are some brand new people who weren't on the board a long time now on the finance committee. Uh, uh, people who just became chair of the finance committee and, and I know Walter used to tease me all the time when I was the best assistant. He said, you have to realize you're dealing with bean counters. So I don't know, we, we're going to have to figure out how to make a compelling case, not just with stories and cutting programs, but what, what we're going to do for the future. How giving is going to, now is going to impact the foundation as well, future foundation for us, I don't know.
Well, um, I, I appreciate all those comments, I just think, you know, this is going to be, this is going to be, um, going to be a challenge, I think, to work through this. But everything connected with the coronavirus and to the lesser extent the tornado is a challenge. And, uh, and so we just need to, we need to suck it up and, and figure it out and hope that there is, um, uh, there are enough cooler heads on the board that we can have some flexibility in, in, in these numbers and, uh, and continue to serve, uh, in the way we need to serve. Any more of that?
I, I guess my question is, is do we need to have some sort of plan or conversation about the next foundation meeting? For those of us that are on the foundation board so that we can, our voice is, um, used in the most efficient and, um, appropriate and effective way possible, our voices?
Um, and Kent, I'm, I'm wondering if we can orchestrate that so that when we, before we have our next meeting, whatever case is being made, we can maybe between the three of us, um, figure out, or you know, you may want to say, you know, who's going to say what, so we can be sure that all aspects of the case are made. And we're not repeating ourselves.
We can certainly have that discussion.
I think the first step is the three of you who are on the board, um, need to, uh, get an understanding of the number.
Yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead, I didn't mean to interrupt Keith.
Um, and you know, two weeks ago, I totally didn't understand the numbers. And I'm not, I'm not saying I really understand them now, but I understand them better. Um, but the difficulty is knowing what's behind some of these numbers and, um, but I, I just dealing with, you know, like three numbers, what's the bottom line, what's the, in the rainy day fund? You know, I just, I think it's got to get deeper than that. And if, and if you don't understand the numbers, I think it's hard to, it's hard to make the case at the foundation, uh, foundation board meeting. Um, any sort of discussion among you three realizes is sunshine law.
Right, but I, I mean Keith, I'm looking at the operating, um, the operating budget, the summary of the operating budget that Kent sent out. And, and that's pretty straightforward in that you see the two hundred and twenty-three thousand dollar ten percent contingency reduction. And then you see at the bottom, I mean, that's the first question, the deficit, um, the surplus deficit, the reserve at a hundred and sixty-five thousand. Maybe because at the very least, my question is why wouldn't they, they move that up into library support? To reduce our, you know, contingency reduction cell.
Well, they are using. I mean, that's.
There, but isn't, there's, but there's left, um, isn't, isn't there some left? Are they, they're not using all of it.
No, well, that's the number that balances, um, makes the balance, makes the budget balance. Like I said before, the, the five twenty-five is a fifteen percent reduction in fundraising.
Right.
The other two numbers are ten percent reductions and the gap is being filled by the hundred and sixty-five from the reserve.
Right, all right, well, maybe let me, we can take this offline, let me think about it then.
Okay.
And Keith, kind of the other thing that is interesting to note on that budget that's pretty straightforward to understand, is that when you look up there at the PPE loan funds, that was the CARES Act money that they've applied for and they do not have that yet.
Yeah. Right.
So another potential two hundred thousand dollar hole if they don't get that.
Have they heard anything, have, have, have they been approved by the bank yet?
No.
Okay, that's big then, ooh.
Yeah. So that means you've got a, you know, you've got another two hundred thousand dollar hole, don't know where that's going to come. Um, I would be happy to meet with the three of you all, um, and, uh, Kent's still got his hand up, he wants to say something.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't take it down.
Okay. I would be happy to meet with the three of you all and, um, and talk you through it the way I understand things. I mean, I pretty much have already, um, but if, you know, until you spend some time with these numbers, um, they don't really sink in. At least they don't with me. Um, and I think it's really hard, to me, the way the budgeting should happen is that she should have three pots. You should have one pot that's, or at least is this, uh, things like, um, NASA that are really supported by external funds. I mean, you know, NASA is really supposed to be supported by Metro. And so, and, and the next pot is, um, those things that are supported by restricted dollars. Keep all that separate then from the third pot, which are these programs that they fund with unrestricted dollars. Money from the gala or whatever, First Edition Society, that kind of stuff. Because you can't really get a sense of, of, when you pull all those together, you can't get a sense of, of what's going on. And, and it's, and it's those unrestricted dollar funds, as Kent said, that's going to suffer out of this. But anyway, I, I, I think there's a lot that needs to be done going forward, um, in terms of the process and in terms of the, um, I don't know, just the, the relationship, um, a- as we go forward with the budget in the, in the, in the future. And I've had several long conversations with David Escavell about this. And, and I think once we get through the crisis here, that we need to sit down then and think about, how can this process be, um, a little less contentious or a little, little less troublesome than it has been this year and probably last year? So anyway, I'm, I'm rambling at this point, I'm happy to meet with y'all and we can talk about it.
I would like that, thank you.
And we'll help you understand how you can do that and not be in violation of the sunshine laws.
Well, um, um,
You have to tell.
Um, if we're imparting information and not making decisions, um, that we're not supposed to be in violation.
I think too, if you're meeting as foundation board people, you're, and rather than library board people, I think you aren't, you aren't bound by the sunshine laws, are you?
Uh, I think you're still, I think you're still library board people. I, I, I mean, I'll, I'll assert to Derek on that, but I, I think, I think it would still be technically a problem. Um, you know, I mean, whether, whether anybody's really put their hand on it. Uh, and, and really we are just sort of, it's like an educational session rather than, uh, making any sort of decisions that relate to library policy.
Do you wish for you to weigh in right now or here? Okay, how many members from the library board are on the foundation?
Three.
You should exercise some caution at any time more than two board members meet, uh, that you do not discuss library business. But you are acting as foundation members when you, uh, are meeting for each purpose. And because of the concern that you may discuss library, uh, business, uh, I, imagine your foundation conducts its meetings openly, uh, but we are not able to give legal advice specifically to your foundation. You would need to defer to counsel for that foundation, since it's a nonprofit entity separate from Metro.
All right, we'll meet and not discuss library business, we'll discuss foundation business.
Right.
Good. All right.
All right, so, um,
Thank you, Dan.
Maybe Bernadette could, uh, um, you know, send out a, pretty little thing to call and find a meeting time for, if we're all available.
Okay.
We are five minutes away from, uh, the targeted adjournment time.
Yeah, and I, I apologize, I got us totally out of order on, uh, the agenda, I just was trying to go through my notes and.
No, that's fine, it was important to talk about that and ma- and make sure we had a full discussion. Um, we, we're supposed to have a board election at the April meeting, um, uh, remind me who the board, um, board officers are? I'm chair, I think Lucy is vice chair.
That's correct, and Robert is secretary.
Okay, um, I will open the floor for, uh, let's, since we're short on time, but, but let me say this, Lucy is up for reappointment right now. Um, and, uh, we've not heard anything about that. But, um, if it is the pleasure of the board that Lucy be reappointed as vice chair, uh, and then she's not reappointed to the board, we can deal with that later, uh, so I don't, uh, for, for one, I'm not too concerned about that and if we have to deal with it at a later time, we.
I would like to renominate, I would like to renominate Lucy as board vice chair.
I'd like to second that.
All right.
Please, please identify yourselves when you're making motions and through on audio.
This is Katie Booney seconding.
All right.
Okay, you got my motion, it was Robert who made the motion.
Right. Um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
All right, or chair?
I nominate Keith continue to stay as chair.
I second that, yeah.
This is Katie.
All right, we have a motion to second on that, all in favor, say aye.
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 Um, secretary?
Move that Robert remain secretary, this is Joyce.
Say your second.
I'll second that, this is Lucy.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, all right, now then, uh, we've got these two policies that, uh, we need to vote on, um.
Right, and Bernie, can we move down to page thirty-one? These are mainly housekeeping and, uh, so much so that I decided I could handle them myself, so we'll see. Uh, interlibrary loan is, uh, the area where we, we move books between libraries, uh, and borrow. Uh, when somebody comes in and asks us for a book that we do not own, uh, it's the process that we discover which library has it and it's a formal process to, uh, borrow it from another library. And we've done this, uh, in practice, but we've not had a policy on it before. And it's mainly to, that we can specify the rights and responsibilities of borrowers. Uh, it's pretty straightforward, it's something we probably should have formalized years ago.
Yeah, we should have had the interlibrary loan policy in place ages before this, but being at that as it may, I would move that we, uh, adopt the interlibrary loan policy as presented on pages one, thirty-two, and so forth, this is Robert. I think it goes to page thirty.
Kate, this is Kent, yes, second.
Okay, we have a motion second, agree to discussion, uh, about, uh, the motion. If not, um, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed, all right, leave alone.
Then the, the wellness policy and resolution, as you're aware, uh, we have be well at NPL and a number of workplace policies that were encouraging staff to, uh, to, uh, be healthier. And we passed a previous, uh, policy, uh, in two thousand and sixteen. And the, uh, wellness committee and our experts on staff feel like the current policy in place is a little bit too refined and detailed. So what they sought to do with this one is make a broader state, statement that seem more realistic and applicable, so.
All right, do I hear any questions, Ben?
Uh, but page thirty-seven, the very, very last item, supporting and providing, or an access to active and alternative transportation. What exactly does that mean?
Uh, just the idea that, that we make sure that staff are looking at things like riding bikes, uh, walking, uh, other things like that so that everybody isn't driving, just providing, creating a more active lifestyle for transportation.
Okay, so these are just guidelines, staff?
Yeah.
Any other question?
Okay, I. This is Robert, I move that we adopt the, that wellness policy as stated on pages thirty-six and thirty-seven.
Second from Joyce. Any other questions, comments? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, let's go back to the foundation thing for just one minute before we adjourn. Um, Kent, um, how quickly would you all be looking at, uh, the, the decision on that two hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars?
Um, we can, we can do it here in the next week or so.
It might be better if we do that first.
Okay. I've already had some general discussions around it, so it's one of those painful things that you hate to get into the detail on, until you absolutely have to. But what I'm hearing is, it's time to do it, so we can do it.
I would do, I think, I know, I mean, we're, we're stretching you one more stretch.
That's okay.
I feel bad about it, but I think, I, I think that to attack this, that's not the right word, to, to deal with this in a, in a reasonable manner, we sort of need to have a sense of that. And then I think the four of us can get together, and I'm, I'm assuming that, and you and Elise may want to meet with us as well. I mean, Elise, it's a very important question in all this, so maybe we find a time when all of us can, you know, and if we can do this on Zoom, it would be so much better. So I'll leave that to you all. But I, I would. Then try to get us together, and I don't know when the foundation board meets, but I would like, I would like for you all to do the detail work, get us together immediately after that, all of which we can do before the foundation board meets. So.
Okay. I'm looking right now at my calendar and.
I have the 12th, I believe, of May. May 12th.
That is correct.
I do as well, yeah.
Okay. So this is the, what is today, the 21st, 22nd or something?
21st.
So it would need to be like that first week in May, it sounds like, when we all get together.
Okay. We can do that.
Well, thanks up to all of y'all. Our difficult times, and the need is great, as I said before, and we're smart people, we can figure this out.
And thank you all for coping with the technology. I'm hoping we only have to have one more of these like this, and hopefully by June or July, at least, we will be able to start sitting in different corners of the room or something.
We do too.
So, and Bernie, thank you for putting this up, and I'm sorry I jumped the agenda on you.
Okay. Everybody said well.
Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Thank you. Bye.
Thanks, all.
This has been a service of the Metro Nashville Network. If you would like to see this presentation again, or for more information about this and other programs, visit Nashville.gov.